Good afternoon, thank you for attending and welcome to the meeting of the Finance Subcommittee. My name is Zahira Nas, I am the Finance Subcommittee Co-Chair. The meeting today is open to the public, however, appendices one and two to item 11 on the agenda are not available to the public or press because they contain exempt information relating to financial and business affairs. If members wish to discuss the information in the appendix, we will need to ask the members of the public and press to kindly leave for that part of the meeting and we will pause the webcast. We have not received no questions or petitions from the public. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today, if there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the town hall staff, the assembly point is Tudor Square. For the benefit of the webcast, can I ask Finance Subcommittee members to introduce themselves?
Maruf Raff, councillor Netheredge and Shallow.
Hi, Marian Elliott, Green councillor for Gleedless Valley.
Good afternoon, I'm Mike Chaplin, councillor for Southey Ward.
Councillor Jolton, Don't Ollie.
Councillor Mike Leavry, West Eccles Street.
Mary Lee Donald Ward.
Thank you. May I just switch your speaker off, please? Thank you. There are two urgent reports that we have received, Sea Supplements PAC to seek committee agreement to receive the reports. Central Government has made a number of awards of funding to Sheffield City Council with little notice, which we need to be accepted within a tight deadline. In order to be able to utilise the funding, reports authors can provide further details on the reasons for urgency, so you will have them in your packs today. Is there any apologies for absence?
Chair, yeah, I've got apologies from councillors Lodge and Mohammed.
Thank you. Exclusions of public and press as above. Item number four, declarations of interest, is there any declarations of interest? Minutes of previous meeting, can members approve as a correct record for the Finance Subcommittee meeting held on the 4th of January? Is that agreed? That's agreed, thank you very much. Item six, public questions and petitions, we have received no public questions for today's meeting. Moving on to item number seven, capital approvals, month nine. Is that over to you, Damien? And you do have that in your pack, but also larger copies are on your desks as well. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Damien Watkinson, I'm here to present the amendments to the variations to the capital programme that have come forward this month. I'll run through briefly and then have some technical questions. Under Transport, Regen and Climate Change, we've got as part of the Level Up Programme at Attcliff tram stop improvements that are going to be undertaken by the PTA arm of the Combined Authority, and so members are also asked to approve the grant terms of that in appendix two, so passporting the funds on to the MCA in order to deliver those works. In terms of local transport schemes, there's the putting in the budget for implementation of a 20 mile hour zone at Carton Hole, the annual double yellow lines programme in response to petitions, feasibility stages of parking scheme around St Vincent's and the next stage of the city centre pavement parking enforcement scheme. In terms of more strategic transport schemes, there's the increase in budget to provide a city centre bike hub at Telephone House and the installation, the cost towards the installation of the bus gate or rundle gate, it's been discussed previously here, and this is the budget just to do the implementation following feasibility. Under Community Parks and Leisure, we've had some funding from DFE for improvements to existing family centres to move them towards family hubs. Then in terms of open space improvements, we've had Level Up Parks fund to put some improvements in at Winker Bank, we've had funding from the police in order to put lighting improvements at Mount Pleasant Park, they've been increasing costs on a couple of schemes at Ecclesfield Park and at Partington Cross Pavilion, so with Ecclesfield Park, that's to deliver the tennis courts mainly, and at Partington Cross Pavilion, the improvements to the mechanical and engineering works there, the first stage of improvements at that park in order to make that pavilion usable again using a rugby league foundation funding that we've received. We've also had, been able to increase the scope of the mountain bike trails work at Parkwood through some contribution from the local transport plan that's been made towards that. Under housing, I think at Strategy and Resources last month, there was a report to accept a £4 million Homes Upgrade Grant, and this is just the inclusion of that funding now within the capital programme, so that's to install measures to low income households that are off gas grade in order to improve their thermal efficiency and energy efficiency. There are also some changes to acquisitions that have been made at Gleedless Valley in terms of some masonettes and smaller properties as part of that overall master plan that's taking place there. Then, under children, educating children and families, they were putting a marker down, it's ring fencing a million pounds from the high needs capital budget for bids that have been put in for alternative provision schools, so two bids have gone in and as part of that bidding process, we have to demonstrate that we're, as a councillor, will meet any abnormal costs on the ground there, but it's an opportunity to leave in significant investment, so you're looking at, you know, 12 to 15 million pounds potentially if these bids are successful, because the DFE will fully fund then the building of the schools. We've also had a bid successful for funding towards creating a new small, two to three bed children's home, and then finally, we've had the next stage of delivering the town halls, emergency lighting improvements to allow the occupation up to floor three, so last month, we had the feasibility approved for that and they're ready to move on towards tendering that work now. That's a quick whistle stop tour of everything that's on there, if anybody's got any questions.
Thank you, Damien, is there any questions? Councillor Otten?
No, thank you Chair. On the tram stops projects, has this been through TRC for consideration approval, is it just coming for us to the capital aspect?
This is just for the capital, the principle of the whole, of the levelling up fund was, I think it was February 22, like the whole process, the whole programme of levelling up fund works, yeah.
Right, so okay, so it predates the TRC Committee, okay, but it's been before members, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, obviously, I'd have a number of questions to ask about it, if it was coming here for the kind of approval of the concept of the scheme, but if that's been done, I'll accept that. I would just comment, I mean, I appreciate 250k probably doesn't go very far, if you're spending 250k on two tram stops, I do hope you get increased numbers, I don't know what that's going on, if it's not going to increase the amount of capacity for trams themselves, but if it improves, I know links in and out of the station for people on foot, that would certainly, that would potentially increase numbers, wouldn't it, so that would be welcome. I imagine if we spent, if we had the money to do all of the tram stops to, you know, an extra 125k each, that would be, that would be the amount of money you could possibly get another line for, and it's, you know, it's a frustration, isn't it, that the tram network has not really grown, apart from the tram train in Rotherham, it's not really grown since it came in, and whereas Manchester has been adding lines upon lines upon lines. So I hope, you know, I hope there's a plan and actually an ambition to have a bigger ask for the tram network than, you know, what seems like a little thing to do. I appreciate there's a larger project in Attcliff that this is part of and will hopefully contribute towards, sorry, that has become a comment Chair, apologies.
Thank you. Councillor Lee?
Thanks, sorry about that one. I was just looking at this large sheet and it says there's some slippage on some projects, one on the General Cemetery and an extra 70k is needed, and on the Mother Road Park improvements, I think, is that now back on track, that slippage? Because I think we found the additional funding for that one, so I'm assuming it's not back on track.
Is that on the monitoring report rather than the capital approvals report?
Oh, sorry, I'm jumping the gun.
Yeah. Yeah, as far as I'm aware, yeah, we've got the additional section 106 funding for General Cemetery that's been identified on that, and... Sorry, bear with me, I'm just scrolling down my screen. It's on page 73. Is that the one you're looking at?
I'm looking on this, have you got this one?
Yeah, Mother Road.
It's just...
Yeah, so, yeah, so those improvements are going forward, yeah, the Mother Road ones, the spend's just been, you know, slipped into next year for that, but yeah, the General Cemetery one, yeah, the additional funding's been identified, there is just some slippage on that scheme.
I think we found the money for Mother Road, so does that mean it's back on track?
Yes, oh, yeah, 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 both, I think, I think, yes, I'm sure the approvals for Mother Road came through last month potentially at Strategy and Resources, but yeah, it's just, the schemes have slipped on, yeah, the funding's there.
Councillor Leary?
Thank you Chair. On this, on page, on section four, 4.2, the Corker Bottoms new build, has the whole project slipped 12 months or is it just the deposit that has moved?
Yeah, as I understand it, it's just the deposit payment that's moved, the build has slipped, but I don't think it's slipped the full 12 months, it's just the payment, it's because it looks a big amount, because obviously it just, it either happens or it doesn't, it's not a case of us building it where it would be incremental spend, but you'd see it's sort of a, it's a one-off payment, so yeah, I don't believe the delay's fully 12 months, I think it's just the absolute move to financial year, which is a difficulty when you're looking at purchases.
Yeah, yeah, is there any other slippage in the build?
In the new build schemes, in general, yeah, I mean, so there's, I mean, above that, there's the acquisition at Hansworth, and there is some more that's coming through, probably reported next month, off the top of my head, I think Hansworth, there's been a slippage on some of that, some of the work there, but that's literally just out of the press, you know, I've just been looking at the forecasting on that, so yeah, there is more.
Do you think it will be possible next month to have a full report on slippage on new build across the country?
Yeah, yes.
Obviously the money will slip with it.
Yes, yeah, yeah, there's not time limit on the funds that are used for the new build housing, so it's not like some of the grants that we receive, most of it is through the borrowing and the right to buy receipts that we've now got five years to utilise, but yeah, yeah, we can put something together for that.
Councillor Roff?
Yeah, sorry, just three questions. If we look at the monitoring report, go to 4.10 Broadfield Road Junction, please, I note that just the work on that's recently finished last, actually on Sunday, in regards to the closure of the road, so can I just confirm, do we have an estimated time for when the works will be fully completed?
Sorry, which scheme did you say, sorry?
Broadfield Road Junction.
Broadfield Road Junction.
Broadfield.
Broadfield, sorry.
4.10.
Right, no, I would have to get in touch with transport colleagues and get timings for completion.
All right, please. Okay, so if we move on to page 75, 5.9, it's fantastic, the Netheredge and Crooks Act to travel neighbourhood schemes are still in place and there's quite a lot of support from members of the public on that, however, I note you've banded both of these together, would you be able to give figures on specific overspends on Netheredge specifically, please?
Yes, I will to get that, again, it'll just, currently the spend's all on one business unit, I just have to check with colleagues to go through on the line.
The two distinct schemes, I know Crooks is important, but I'm much more interested in Netheredge, thank you. And if we move on to the capital approvals, page 29, please, Mount Pleasant Park Lighting, again, it's great to see that you are interested in supporting key stakeholders like myself and Shallow Community Forum and the Local Area Committee on this, and it's good to see that there's been £5,000 here, but I just want to clarify, are there going to be a total of 19 new lighting columns or is it eight new lighting columns and the existing 11 are just going to be refurbished?
That's the situation, as I understand it, that it will be the new ones, eight new ones and some refurbished, so.
Okay, because it uses the word replace there specifically on the second bullet point on page 29, so I just want to, because I've heard the word refurbished used as well and now I've seen the word replace.
Right, I will double check that with the parks team.
Whilst you're also doing that Damien, would you be able to get me a specific diagram of where these lighting columns will be situated?
Yes, we should have that on business plan, so I'll try and dig that out and send it over to you.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Councillor Leary?
Thanks Chair, 5.5, the council housing roofing replacements programme. It seems like we're still in the process of developing a plan. I'm very conscious that this is three years behind already, have we got any idea on when the plan will be ready and will we be in a position to start this rolling again, please?
Right, so that one is the finishing of the old contract, which is just the acceleration of the payment on it, it is going back out to procurement, so that's not been brought forward yet, so given that we're going back out to re-tender, that's going to be several months, just to get out, just to get those documents out again to the market, so it's going to be, it will be a significant delay. I'll speak to the housing team and ask them for their estimated time of when they expect to be bringing that forward back through approvals process.
Because it is a five year programme, and some of the houses that would have been done in 2020, which went to the back of the programme, are now slipping back almost 10 years, which is really a problem from where I'm sat, you know?
Thank you, Councillor Leary. Councillor Chaplin?
Thank you Chair, I just want to express my support in welcoming the double yellow lines for Baxter Muse in Southey Ward on football match days, when the blue team play, we have a lot of car parking problems in that area, making it difficult for the local residents to get in and out, so to have double yellow lines on Baxter Muse will be of some help to the residents. They still have to then get out onto Baxter Road, which could probably also do with double yellow lines as well, and given that that is, apart from one house, no, there's about half a dozen houses on there, but they're down the bottom end, but if you could put that where the, around where the firms are, then people would have access all the way onto Foxhill Road, where they will then be hit with more cars parked on match days, but it's a step in the right direction Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor, Mary Lee?
Thanks, just on the yellow lines, I know we get a lot, considerable number of requests, do we know how many of those requests are accepted and how many get turned down?
I don't know if he's put that actually on the, I don't know if that's in the detail, sometimes that goes in that write-up, if it isn't in there, it's, they do put me a general summary in the business case, so again, I can go back and check that and just see, you know, I know they receive a lot of requests and there is only a certain allocation in the local transport plan to be able to deliver them, so.
I know, I've just had a recent one, that's why I'm asking, and I think it's going to be a good few years before he gets it, if he gets it.
I also have a question regarding double yellow lines, so Broadfield Road is on the list, and it says that sometimes you receive a large number of requests for parking restrictions, yellow lines via email, letter and phone. The Broadfield Road double yellow lines, I know majority of residents on that street where the yellow lines are going to go do not support the yellow lines, and I'm just wondering, regarding the yellow lines, what are your decisions based on? Because it doesn't block any emergency services, any access, and if residents who live on Broadfield Road, who will now have yellow lines outside their houses, they absolutely have nowhere else to park their cars?
Yeah, I would, like I say, obviously I'm not involved in those decisions, that will have been taken to TRC at some point in order to arrive at this list, that takes prioritisation through, so I know they receive reports on how the local transport plan is to be used, so I can ask for them to provide that information that they'll have brought forward there, because they'll have been, I presume they'll have been the TR, traffic regulation orders will have had to go through there as well, so I will double check if they've not been through already.
Thank you for that Damien, there is any further questions, is there any comments? No, okay, so this report contains recommendations for approval, are we all agreed? Yep, okay, so recommendation is agreed and that's unanimous, thank you very much Damien. Moving on to item eight, that's page 45 on the agenda, and the presenting officer is Jane Willoughby, over to you Jane.
Thank you Chair, Jane Willoughby, Head of Accounting, so the report is to bring the committee up to date with the council's general fund position, the HRA, capital programme monitoring and another appendix, which is the collection fund. So it's a standing item, it's a year to date report, so a lot of the narrative is the same as you've seen in recent months, because the reasons for overspend and underspend largely are the same. The last update the committee had was in January, and that was the month eight numbers, this is the month nine numbers, which is December forecast position. So overall, the council's forecasting an overspend at month nine of 15.2 million, so it's a slight improvement on the previous month by 1.9 million, so at month eight, we were reporting 17.1 million overspend, so the improvement largely has come in adult social care, so we've seen 1.2 million improvement in that committee, and the other committees have changed a small amount of underspend across all the other committees really. So the main reasons are, so in Strategy and Resources, better by 0.2, main overspend in there are to do with the restructures in business change and legal services, there's the ongoing issue with electric works, which we've kind of discussed previously, there's work ongoing to release the restrictions on lettings policy to make it more lettable and increase market attractiveness generally, there's been some positive changes in recent months in this committee based on interest rates, because of our cash balances, we've been able to benefit from strong market rates and good returns. In the adult social care committee, we've got an overspend of 10.4 million, so again, as I said earlier, that was a 1.2 million improvement in month, the reason for the overspend is the BIP shortfall, so the high cost packages of care, but the improvement in month has actually been as a result of that, so we've seen the average cost of care packages coming down on new care packages and the averages kind of coming down as those reviews are really starting to kick in, so we're seeing improvements in there. We've still got concerns over the purchasing budgets, in particular learning disabilities, which has got a trend that keeps increasing month on month. In education, children and families, that's 6.6 over, and it's, you know, it's remained stable month on month, main issues again are to do with the residential strategy, business improvement plan, the capacity in Aldine House and some health savings that have not been achievable this year, so really in children's residential placements, short breaks and direct payments are the main causes for overspend. Housing again has been quite an issue this year, we've got an underspend in housing general fund, and that's been due to a better recovery rate on the subsidy on temporary accommodation costs, so we're achieving a higher rate than we budgeted, which has been positive. In the HRA, we've got a 12.8 million overspend, well, reduction to the capital programme, which did improve in month nine, but it was actually due to accounting adjustments really, a reduction in bad debt provision that's caused that to drop this month. The main issues year to date are the shortfall in rent against budgets due to vacant properties, the council tax payments that are having to be made on those empty properties, so the HRA is liable for the council tax for the empties, the backlog of jobs in the housing repairs and maintenance service, so leading to disrepair claims, and HRM have been working hard to address that backlog, reducing the waiting lists on the voids and sort of increasing the gas servicing compliance rates to 98%, so there's been some significant improvements in there, but additional costs have been incurred, which is the main cause for overspend. Transport, Regen and Climate, 0.7 under, and that's mainly due to income above forecast levels, economic development and skills is 0.2 under, no concerns in that committee, waste and street scene, half a million under, and really on a significant budget, it's quite a small variance, and the last one, communities, parks and leisure, 0.6 under. Just to note in there, there is a forecast underspend, there's an underspend of 740k this year for the youth investment fund project, which is being requested to carry forward, but is being forecast in the month nine paper to be spent in year, so there needs to be some further approvals about that in the next month. The appendices, the first appendix is the collection fund monitoring, so it's separate to the general fund, it's for the council, we maintain the collection of council tax and business rates in there and the impact to the general fund position, so that's a quarterly position that's brought to committee and that's quarterly update. Appendix two is the capital programme monitoring, which I think some of you have already picked up some of the questions for Damien there, so if you've any further questions, happy to answer them, thank you.
Is there any questions? Councillor Lee?
Yeah, I know we, just in adult social care, page 53, we're saying there's 70 clients who are receiving quite high costs, high cost packages of care, and we're trying to, we're reviewing those, but where we are making savings, additional people coming back, coming into the service, needing equally high cost packages of care, is that how, that's how I'm reading this, is that right? So it's, we've got 70 people who, because of Covid, needed home care and the cost of that care was very high, and we, part of the work on the overspend is to try and reduce that package of care by doing the reviews of those packages, but it says whilst we are doing that, there are other people coming into the service who need equally large packages of care, and I'm just wondering, given that Covid is now manageable, are we not seeing a reduction in the number of people who need those higher packages? I just wondered why that is happening, I don't know whether you'll be able to answer that or whether it should go to the adult social care committee, I don't sit on that
I'm sure that adult social care committee can answer that far better than I can, but yeah, we've seen this month particularly and the month that we're closing at the moment, lower costs on average, packages of care, so we're seeing, we're seeing the averages come down, I think the comment is kind of, is there to kind of highlight the risk really that, you know, whilst we are, you know, working hard to bring those package costs down, we have still got high demand for the service, but there are targets and benchmark rates that the team are working towards maintaining really, so I think, I'm not sure whether that helps at all.
Yeah, it just seems like where we're reducing costs, they're being replaced by another, a similar number, that's all, so we're not really moving forward, I guess.
Any further questions? Councillor Elliott?
Thank you Chair, it's just a question, not a criticism, I'm trying to understand the circumstances, and again, it's about the recruitment, so the two committees with the considerable overspend site recruitment issues is the major reason, particularly in adult health and social care, so it seems that it's not through lack of trying to recruit people, but people just aren't being recruited, so again, this might be something for the committee to answer, but do you know, it states, page 53, there are national challenges around this, so... So do you know what those national challenges are? Is it that there's a shortage of skilled people in that sector or is it just that we need a lot more of them?
I think it's probably a bit both, actually. Labour shortages, it's been quite difficult to recruit people into the service in general. And it, yeah, it's trying to, they're working hard to try and make it an attractive career opportunity and progression opportunities for people to move into that sector. But I think generally there's just a shortage of people to be able to fulfil the roles.
And do you know any more detail about sort of, have the numbers gone down in that sector of skilled people? What type of people were taking the jobs before? You know, for example, was it graduates, was it people from other countries? Is there any sort of information to sort of suggest why this is happening?
I can't answer that, I'm afraid, but I can follow up with the relevant people and try and get you some further information on that.
Thanks, Jane.
Councillor Lee?
Well, I had a similar question, really. Is it because people who were in that sector, were, a lot of those people from the European Union now have gone home? And therefore there's a shortage from, for that? That is one of the reasons, that's one of the things that's causing, impacting on that, on that particular area of work?
I mean, potentially, I think we can see that across the board, can't we, in the rest of the economy? But yeah, we can get further detail on that. I'm sure that they'll be able to provide further analysis, breakdown of those skilled roles and sort of where the gaps are.
Thank you, Jane. There's no further question. Oh, sorry, Councillor Everie?
Not a question, but a comment, that despite all these challenges, adult health and social care have managed to keep the finances under control and are now starting to deliver some savings within the budget, which is a real testament to what we're doing because this could have run away and it hasn't. It's under control, which is great news. Thank you.
Councillor Elliot?
Sorry, one more. Page fifty, there's a reference to local area committees and it says, it looks like there'd be a significant underspend and it's indicating that's going to be carried forward into twenty twenty three, twenty four and spent according to the approved plan. I just wondered, what is that and where can we find it? Please.
Thanks. The local area committee plans were all approved in January, I think. So the budget that was, there was a budget that was carried forward from prior years in conjunction with award parts for each of the local area committees. The forecast is to spend all of that to the end of the year, but actually, some of that might be carried forward based on the current run rate. But I think that all the things are committed as per the plan so that, you know, it might be carried forward, but it's really just kind of slippage into next year because it's kind of one-off budgets. But all the details of the spending proposals should be all in the local area committee plans, which are published online.
So that's the approved plan for each local area committee? Okay, sure, I just wasn't clear on that. Thanks.
Thank you. I don't think there's any further questions or comments. The committee is recommended to note the council's financial position for month nine. Are we all agreed? Yeah? So that recommendation is fine. Thank you very much, Jane. Moving on to item eight, sorry, item nine, vehicle replacement programme. And that's page seventy nine of the agenda and the presenting officer is Tom Smith. Thank you.
Just a slight delay, just logging in. So I'm Tom Smith, I'm Director of Direct Services. This report is doing three things. It provides an update on our vehicle replacement programme so far, which is the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty five. It gives an update on the delivery of that and the proposals in terms of what we're going to replace in year four of that programme, which slightly confusingly is a year delayed due to some issues in terms of Covid and buying vehicles and availability of vehicles. And then finally, it just seeks approval for us to commission a hundred and five vehicles with an estimated value of two point seven million pounds to replace a hundred and five vehicles in the service that are unsustainable financially, they are coming to their end of their life, the cost of our money in terms of maintenance and some of them are also not CAS compliant as well. So we're seeking to bring those into compliance. In terms of the main issues, we started that vehicle replacement programme in twenty nineteen. We've replaced about four hundred and seventy six vehicles so far and that's reduced our carbon emissions by forty two thousand tonnes and our NOx emissions by thirty seven thousand tonnes. Is the main aim of the way we're procuring to buy the cleanest vehicle possible and you'll see under one point five, we have a bit of a criteria that we run through whenever we buy a vehicle, which is okay, can we buy an ultra-low emission first? Is it available to buy? Can it be charged somewhere? So do we actually have the infrastructure to charge it? Thirdly, if we don't, is there a petrol or hybrid option for that? And then fourthly, if we get down to the bottom of that criteria, we buy the latest Euro six point two diesel version of that vehicle. So that's the kind of criteria that applies to every purchase we make. It's fair to say that that is, that criteria is constrained by a whole range of things at the moment, as you can probably imagine. We know we haven't got certain vehicles that are just not available to buy or aren't economic to buy, especially the larger ones in terms of electric and especially things like wheelchair accessible vehicles, really quite a difficult thing to buy. And charging capacity is the other big issue, frankly. So we have good charging facilities on some of our depots, but the reality is we can't expand that further because we've reached grid capacity in some of those locations in terms of national grid capacity. And we also need to do some work on a home charging policy as well, which would allow staff to take cars home and do things with them at home. So at the moment, we're quite constrained in terms of those vehicles. But as I say, we always apply that criteria anyway. If we can, we try to buy the newest vehicle we possibly can. As I said earlier, if we replace these vehicles, that will bring everything up to date in terms of clean air zone. We've still got eighty three non-compliant vehicles, that's about nine per cent of our fleet. We don't think there are issues with that particularly. A number of them fall under some short-term exemptions also, but also we can work around it because some of those vehicles simply don't need to enter the clean air zone in to operate and we can do an amount of movement of vehicles to accommodate that. But we do need to replace them in the long term because it's the right thing to do to maintain clean air in the city. We want the most modern vehicles we can possibly get. So in a nutshell, that's the report and so the recommendation for the committee is to agree to purchase those hundred and five vehicles as part of the capital programme. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Councillor Chaplin?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Tom, for that report. I think we're all, certainly with those of us on waste and street scene and those who sit on the licensing committees, are aware now of the problems in actually purchasing vehicles that are compliant and the headache that that is causing people in the private sector. So I'm just wondering what timeframe you're expecting to be able, do you think you'll be able to get all those vehicles within the, within the next financial year?
I think we're relatively confident we'll be able to do it within the next financial year, even with the constraints on the market, largely because, as I say, our issue at the moment is that we will be, to a certain extent, buying fairly standard vehicles because we don't have the charging capacity to buy the ULEV vehicles where those constraints in the market are really, really, you know, biting the most. So things like our caged vehicles and some of our buses and things like that will be Euro six diesel probably because there's nothing else we can really buy at the moment and we ought to be able to buy those within the constraints of that twelve-month period, yeah.
Although you did mention vehicles for disabled access are proving problematic.
They are in certain times. So electric vehicles with disabled access are really difficult. So if I take, there's a, not to get too much in the technicalities of fleet and vehicles and how they work, but anything that has a higher energy requirement on it to operate is actually quite a difficult thing to buy because of battery life. So if you want to buy a seventeen-seater minibus that has the ability to lift a wheelchair onto said bus at the same time, that extra energy requirement of using a lift to get something into a vehicle means that your battery life, your battery requirement therefore isn't necessarily operationally deliverable within the service. So that's where the constraint is, on the electric. We can, we fairly easily buy wheelchair accessible vehicles that are not electric.
Can I have one more bite of the cherry, please, Chair? It was the comments around the fact that a lot of staff with conventional fossil fuel powered vehicles are able to take them home and either keep them on the driveway or parked on the side of the road. And there was mentioned that if you're transferring to ULEV vehicles, that they should have facility to charge their own vehicles at home. And it's dawned on me that there could be some difficulties around that and some trust issues where people to have their own electric vehicles that they've purchased for their own personal use and the use of charge points at home. Is that something you're exploring at the moment?
So yes, it is, but as you've described, Councillor Chaplin, this is, the reason why we're not, why it's not a quick thing to do is because it has complexity. There's all sorts of in-kind stuff because we would effectively potentially even be installing things at people's properties and things. There are some of the local authorities have gone down this route though, so we're not entirely on our own in exploring this as a possibility. And it is one way to open up the ability to buy electric vehicles for those staff who do take them home and work, you know, and use their homes as a base in that way. So we are exploring it, but you're right, it isn't going to be a quick thing. And the reason why we said it in here and we wanted to say, you know, we're still having to buy some of these petrol vehicles at the moment is because we still do need to do that longer-term piece of work on our overall strategy. Probably is worth saying that in the background, we are right now starting the piece of work to look at how we get to twenty thirteen in terms of net zero with our fleet. And that is going to require a whole host of different things, you know, probably a home charging policy. The biggest thing it's going to require is the link in with the accommodation strategy and what we do with our depots because the investment in grid infrastructure and charging capacity at our depots is going to be the biggest thing that will unlock our ability then to move entirely to electric in future.
Thank you. Councillor Rolfe?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Tom, for that report. Just a few questions, actually. I know you've said you're looking to purchase vehicles based on a set of criteria, A, B, C, D. What happens if you cannot find a vehicle that meets A, B, C or D?
So that shouldn't be an issue because everything we currently have will meet D. So there isn't a vehicle in our fleet that we won't be able to buy a Euro six compatible diesel vehicle for. So it is, I'm trying to think of the word, every vehicle we have on fleet will fit into those four categories. So it shouldn't ever arise that we can't buy a vehicle that doesn't fit into that four categories. We won't ever buy a Euro five diesel, for example, now, because we can buy everything at Euro six standard.
Would you buy a Euro four petrol?
I doubt it, largely because it would be old and the reason why we're buying new is to reduce our maintenance bill effectively. It's that cost benefit of having new versus old and the maintenance cost of an older vehicle. So the intention here is these are all brand new vehicles, so there won't be anything that isn't within the current Euro classification for petrol or diesel.
I note fifty-one of these vehicles that we're looking to replace would be L light, light commercial vans. Will they also be subject to the clean air zone charge?
These vehicles won't be because these vehicles will all be Euro six or higher. So they will be exempt.
If you cannot find a vehicle to replace them, so will they still be subject to the charge?
Well, as I've just said, I think we will be able to find those vehicles at Euro six, so it won't be the case. These vehicles will be clean air zone compliant.
And just one further question. I know the public, if they've got a light commercial van or able to apply for a grant, will the council be able to give themselves a grant to some of these vehicles?
Not as far as I'm aware. So this is part of our own, I mean, I'm not part of the CAS team, so I don't know the detail in terms of the grants that are available through that particular scheme. But all of these vehicles are part and parcel of our, you know, stated replacement programme and we would be replacing them anyway regardless of the CAS. These are all vehicles that are not economic to run really anymore, the maintenance requirements are high, we would want to replace them anyway. So to some extent, whether we get a grant or we don't get a grant, whether we get support or we don't get support, the right thing to do is to replace them because it's the most economic thing to do for the council.
And just one final question. I did note, you also said you've currently got eighty-three vehicles that are not compliant. So the ones you replace will be compliant and won't be subject to a charge. So will these eighty-three vehicles that are not compliant, will they be subject to the charge? And who will pay that charge? Will it be the employee that is driving that vehicle or will it be the council?
So just for absolute clarity, the eighty-three vehicles are the ones that we are replacing this year and are not CAS compliant. So those eighty-three will all be CAS compliant in the future. It's fair to say that if, you know, if we, if we are running a CAS vehicle and the council says you must, sorry, a vehicle right now and it isn't compliant with the clean air zone and we tell a member of staff to drive into said clean air zone, clearly we would be paying the charge because we've been instructing that member of staff to do that. I have to say though, as I say, my view is that that would be a rare occurrence, A, because it's a small number of vehicles in our overall fleet and B, because we feel we can work around the CAS with the fleet that we've got. We've got a big enough fleet that we shouldn't need to drive these vehicles into the clean air zone, the ones that aren't compliant. And that's important, obviously, not just from a charging perspective, it's important from a clean air perspective. We don't want to drive these vehicles into the clean air zone, you know, our point principle, really.
Thank you, Tom, for that clarification. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councillor O'Ton.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Tom, for the report. Before I get to my question, just on that last point, I would hope that we don't detour around the clean air zone in a dirty vehicle and go a further distance and, you know, worsen the air quality for more people. Given the revenue from the clean air zone comes back into the council, it makes sense, more sense to pay the charge, I would suggest. So my question is, we're buying an awful lot of Euro six diesel vehicles in this proposal. I accept the reasons that have been given for why we have to do that. It's unfortunate that the vehicles we might want to buy aren't available in the numbers and at the price, that makes it a, you know, a sensible choice and I take your point about the charging as well. So the question is, do you expect any of these vehicles still to be on the road in twenty thirty and therefore will we not be zero carbon after all by then?
So we have a five-year vehicle replacement programme, so our reasonable expectation is these vehicles won't be on the road in twenty thirty. The piece of work, as I say, we're doing in the background is to come up with that fleet replacement strategy for twenty thirty. These vehicles have a residual value, so we will always have options to remove them earlier if we need to, basically, you know, obviously based on a financial, you know, calculation and a business case. So even if they were at that point, we could still meet net zero by effectively selling those vehicles on and buying something that was ultra-emission. I have to say though, given we have a five-year vehicle replacement programme and our entire business case is based on the maintenance costs at year five outweighing, you know, the cost of buying a new vehicle, sorry, the other way around, that it's better to buy a new vehicle at year five than it is to continue to maintain it. I think our expectation is that we will be able to still meet net zero twenty thirty. I would say the biggest constraint on net zero twenty thirty is not really the replacement programme at all, it's our ability to charge them and our ability to buy appropriate vehicles off from the market.
I mean, okay, so thank you for that. I mean, I, yeah, I accept that. Obviously, there comes a point where vehicles need to be replaced and it's more cost-effective to replace with new than it is to keep maintaining. My impression, actually, for a lot of vehicles is that that has got longer than it used to be, that vehicles are generally more reliable than they used to be. And if a rule of thumb was five years, you know, fifteen years ago, then maybe it's seven or eight years now. But also, I accept that these are probably vehicles that are used every day and have significant mileage and therefore probably don't last as long as, you know, a private car might. It's still, all that said, it does seem to be we're getting pretty close to the time when a new diesel vehicle that we buy will still be on the road in twenty thirty and on the road and used by the council in twenty thirty. So if, you know, we're pretty close- So if, you know, we're pretty close to this report, a report like this coming before us and us saying, hey, we're not going to make zero carbon in 2030. And, you know, you might find yourself being the one to deliver that bad news before, because of the five-year nature of the asset, before all the other council departments emitting carbon have to make that admission. Are you ready for that?
So that's the piece of work we're doing, I would say. So, you know, our, you know, this council stated ambition is net zero 2030. The report we will be bringing forward probably to this committee, it might be this committee, I guess it depends on the level of expenditure, it may end up being S and R given it will be a big strategic, you know, decision around what we do with fleet and accommodation and charging infrastructure and all a bunch of other stuff. But, you know, my expectation is we can bring forward that strategy pretty early in the next municipal year, which should give us then enough time, you know, funding allowing, markets allowing, there's so many unknowns in this, aren't there? But I think we can, we can clearly set out what we will need to do to get to 2030, you know, in this year, in 2023 and deliver it subject to, you know, the constraints we know we have around finance and all things.
Yeah, thank you for that, I'm satisfied with those answers. It is something that the market needs to wake up and deliver, isn't it, the vehicles that we need? They ought to believe we all want to be net zero by 2030 and that we will buy the product if they will make it.
Thank you councillor Otten. councillor Levery?
Thanks Chair. And just a query on the purchase of Transit. Have we looked at trades and different trades and whether some of them can have smaller vehicles? Because quite clearly electricians don't need anything as big as a Transit van to carry cable and electric parts around. Have we considered that and looked at saving some money on purchasing?
Thanks councillor Levery, yes, we're doing precisely that. And the service you're referring to, obviously the replacement services, it's within my area as well, so actually it's an easier decision to make in some respects that one. You're absolutely right, you know, we want vehicles to be the smallest possible vehicle whilst still being the right vehicle to do the job. We've got a lot of Transit vans within service. I think our feeling is the number of those Transit vans could definitely be replaced by something smaller and more fuel efficient and everything else. So yeah, we are looking at as part of this process.
There is any further questions or comments? Thank you very much Tom Smith. The recommendation does need approval, are we all agreed? Yeah, the recommendations are agreed, that's unanimous, thank you very much Tom. Next item on the agenda is item 10, acceptance of funding from Homes England and Cabinet Office. It's the urgent items, so I'll see supplement pack, page one, and the presenting officer, Alan Seesman.
Thanks Chair. This report is, as has just been mentioned, is to accept grant offers from Homes England of £350,000 and an offer from the Office of Government Property in partnership with the Local Government Association of £504,000, £504,000 that's right. The funding is for use to cover development costs for regeneration, levelling up housing and estate rationalisation programmes. The report seeks the approval to accept funding from Homes England and from the Office of Government Property and Local Government Association only. The funding will be revenue and all expenditure will be subject to compliance with the council's budget processes, financial regulations and revenue approval processes. In the Homes England money, the money's been awarded to cover costs that we've already incurred associated with work on residential led regeneration activity. The funding will be used to pay for legal fees, sales and marketing costs, site investigations and due diligence associated with Attic of Waterstye project and fees associated with development of delivery of the residential elements within Heart of the City, including legal fees, sale agent fees, resident management information on Heart of the City too. Accepting the funding will free up revenue to secure resources for delivery of future regeneration work associated with the Housing Code Delivery Programme, regeneration placemaking work set out in the city centre vision and levelling up. The grant agreement stipulates that the funding must be spent by the 31st of March 2023 to ensure that existing spend items have been identified for inclusion in the grant agreement and agree with Homes England. This will release SCC revenue for rollover into next year and that will be subject for further approval by committee and for revenue carrying forward request. The Office for Government Property and Local Government Association funding has been awarded for a place pilot activity. Sheffield has been identified by the government as a potential area to run a place pilot. Place pilots will build on one public estate programme and pilot a place-based approach to strategic asset management. The aim of the programme is to drive efficiencies across the public estate and release land held by central and local governments. The outcomes of the place pilot will be joint portfolio planning, stronger focus on place embedded in strategic asset management, efficiency, value and optimised investment across the public estate and better public services by identifying opportunities for co-location, disposals, relocations, land certainly across a multi-porty portfolio collaboration and developing recommendations that can be replicated and scaled up to drive future uptake in other areas by testing new approaches. There's a whole series of potential benefits associated with that, including being used for a smaller, greener, more efficient public estate, accessible and joined-up public services, ongoing commitment to collaborate across the public estate. There's a series of activities that will take place, but hopefully what this will do is allow us to be more efficient in the management of what we do and in collaboration with other bodies. The rest of the report details what difference this was made, the consultation that's happened, for essentially the main thrust of this is to accept this money so we can get on with doing the work that we've identified through Transport Regeneration Committee.
Thank you Alan. councillor Otten?
Thank you Chair, thank you for this, it all sounds marvellous and I said if the details are being gone through by the TRC committee, I won't attempt to re-examine them. I'm pleasantly surprised by the whole idea of applying for grant funding for work, money you've already spent. Is this a new thing? Is there much more of this around? Normally grant holders want you to do something extra for the money they bid for. How does this work? What is the big idea?
There's two things here, the Homes England money is because Homes England have got a spend target and have been working collaboratively with us on certain projects. There is eligible expenditure that they can legitimately spend on that allows us to also further progress the work we're doing with them. So in many ways it's a way of paying us for things that we've already spent on legitimate activity that they could have spent for, so it's teaming and ladling between the budgets essentially. The second one from the Office of Government Property, that's about a forthcoming and new programme, so that's slightly different. So that's, it's just a decision on that has come late in the day and needs to be decided now, so that's subtly different.
councillor Levery?
So I presume that the money flows through into the TLC budget for next year? The saving, you said the revenue?
Correct, yes.
And that will increase their budget?
That is the proposal, we will carry the money saved from the spend by Homes England this year into further activity for next year's budget, yes, actually we'll spend our money next year.
There is no further questions or comments? The report does contain recommendations for approval, are we all agreed? Recommendation is agreed, that's unanimous, thank you very much. Item 11, see supplement pack, page 39, acquisition of property in Attic Cliff, and it's over to Alan again for this one.
Thank you. This is about, given delegated authorities, Chief Property Officer to acquire property identified in appendix one, which is confidential for matters that have become apparent, using resources from the levelling up fund for Attic Cliff. That the purchase and associated costs will be added to the council's capital programme in request of the director of legal governance and consultation with the chief property officer, negotiate, agree and execute all necessary documentation. The main thrust of this is that an opportunity has come to our attention to purchase a property that would be of strategic interest to us within the Attic Cliff Levelling Up Fund area and that it's being made available for us to try and purchase via auction next Tuesday. The reason that the paper is so late is the details of that have only come to light relatively recently and so we are seeking permission to do that, to try and pursue that acquisition next Tuesday. There is, has to be said, no guarantee that we would actually be successful, but we need to get this approval in place in order to allow us to bid next Tuesday.
Any other questions? councillor Chaplin?
Thank you Chair. If we didn't, if this turns out not to be successful, do we stand to lose any significant money on this proposal?
By which mean if we don't spend it on this, will we have to hand the money back to government through the levelling up fund?
No, it's more the risk of proceeding with it and if the purchase doesn't come through, could we lose out?
If we bought it, we would be buying it in light of evaluation on the property within guidelines for what we think is a good value price. So if we did that, we would then pursue our regeneration objectives in Attic Cliff 40. If we're unable to do that, we would be able to regain the money back through a further sale ourselves, I think that's better.
Thank you.
councillor Levery? councillor Elliot, did you have a question? Sorry, okay. Any other questions? councillor Lee?
Yeah, just a comment really, I hope we are successful in purchasing the property because it's just going to add to the immense amount of investment that's gone, it has gone into that area of Attic Cliff compared, you know, if you go back 10 years and then when we had to demolish the stadium and all the things that have happened since, you know, that site, not just the research centres but the two new schools, the rugby, the football, the basketball, all the sporting facilities, absolutely used by the community as well and the research centres and the new housing that will come along on the back of that, no doubt. And the fact that the businesses down there, I see this as a really important, not just this purchase, but all the things that have happened down there will just increase the number of people who want to invest in that area. So I think it's, I wish whoever's going to be doing this, you know, much success because I think a lot of people are rooting on it down in Attic Cliff. And it's just transformed the whole place, hasn't it, with all the developments that perhaps have gone, all down to a few people and the council.
Thank you councillor Lee and I also echo the comments made by councillor Lee. There is any further questions or comments? So thank you very much Alan, sorry, I need to ask, okay, so this report, we need to approve the recommendations for this report, are we all agreed? Yeah, okay, so that's all agreed, that's unanimous, thank you very much, thank you Alan. And that concludes today's meeting, the next meeting is on the 22nd of March at 2pm. Thank you to all the officers presenting the report today, thank you to all the committee members, thank you very much.